Good morning, Byram Hills. I would like to have a motion to call this meeting to order at 7:03 a.m. to discuss the following items. 2.1 Personnel Matter, Teacher Tenure. 2.2 Contract Matter, Individual Employee. 2.3 Contract Matter, Individual Employee. 2.4 Negotiations Matter, BHTA. 2.5 Legal Matter, Individual Student. And 2.6 District Matter, Safety. These are going to be discussed in executive session. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. See you soon. Good morning, Byram Hills. We are back. The board went into executive session at 7:05 a.m. to discuss 2.1 Personnel Matter, Teacher Tenure. 2.2 Contract Matter, Individual Employee. 2.3 Contract Matter, Individual Employees. 2.4 Negotiation Matters, BHTA. And 2.5 Legal Matter. And another one, 2.6 District Matter, Safety. So with that, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No revisions to the agenda, right? Can I please have a motion to adopt today's agenda? Today being, what is today? February 1? 11th, 2025?
Second.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Any comments from the public? Seeing none at 8:30 in the morning? We will move on to consent agenda. 6.1 Personnel. Consent Agenda 7.1, CSE, Sub-CSE, CPSE Recommendations. And 8.1 Business. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor approving? Great, thank you. Now, should we go with unfinished business now? Or are we going to come back to it? How do you want to do it?
We could do, yeah, let's do unfinished business first.
You want to do policies now?
Start a new business.
No, the new business first.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're going to move to item 10, since we have guests here, and go to new business. I turn it over to you.
All right, well, we have Dave Mack here, principal of Wampus Elementary School, and Mark Vazia, our director of Fine Arts. And they're going to talk to us about a, what we're calling a zero period, which we're going to come out with something better than that. But a zero-period band and orchestra opportunity for students. What I really like about their creative thinking behind this is it's giving students an opportunity to do so much more during encore periods. It's giving some students who are tied up in encore periods with special services opportunities to play an instrument. And it was pretty creative on their part regarding shared staffing with the middle school so that we stay on a school schedule as far as employees are concerned. So I may have just said the whole thing.
You did.
All set.
That's true. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us here. So we are talking about a before-school instrumental ensemble pilot. So that's a zero period. So we're looking at 7:45 to 8:30 before the day. So the reason why we're considering this is we're finding about 15% of our current fifth graders are having conflicts with their music ensembles. The way our music ensembles work here at Wampus is that students pick an instrument at the end of third grade. We're starting that after the break. They start, they take a weekly instrumental lesson in fourth grade. And then in fifth grade, they have the option to stay on that instrument and join the band if they're playing a band instrument, join the orchestra, and/or join chorus. So that, if you are a student that wants to do both, you could have a weekly lesson, two days of band orchestra, and a day of chorus. We also, those all meet during encore, which is when we have all of our services. So we have services and enrichment opportunities, including the math program that was added into that last year and all the services that students get. So we've had an increase in the number of students that have conflicts with music. And many, some of them are having to drop an instrumental ensemble in the fifth grade. And there's no really great reentry point there. So we're trying to see how we can meet those needs for those students. And it's all students, or students who have a lot of services and also our advanced math students. So it's across the spectrum. So we're looking at offering a before-school ensemble to give students these opportunities. Right now, we have half of our band and half of our orchestra. We have Band A, Band B, Orchestra A, Orchestra B. So we're considering having one of those. So Band Orchestra A will stay during the day, Mondays and Wednesdays. And Band Orchestra B will be before school at the zero period on Tuesday and Thursdays. And we have been researching schools around Westchester. We've done a few site visits. And a lot of districts are having their ensembles meet before school like this. Some of the site visits we did include Pelham, Mamaroneck, and Scarsdale, who all have pretty successful before-school instrumental programs like this. We did a survey last year, where we started thinking about this last year. We asked families, would you be interested in this? So we had more than half of the families we surveyed, about 56%, said they would be interested in doing this. And we think this could work because we have had experiences where we are inviting students to come before school for ensembles, and they are. Last year, there was a combined band and orchestra program at Wampus. They were doing like film music. And there was 95% attendance rate before school for that. Also, leading up to our winter holidays, we often have the fifth-grade band students come in and they play in the lobby. I don't know if you've seen any of those videos. They play in the lobby as students come in. We have dozens of kids coming before school for that. Also, at the middle school, from the student perspective, we have students coming for jazz band or for the chamber group before school at 7 o'clock, even earlier. So we do have, we've had success with students electing to do these things already. So we think that this option gives a possibility for those kids that might need it or that might want it because they just want to go to encore. Because a lot of our students, encore program is really fun and exciting, and kids are enjoying those.
Quick, oh.
Yeah.
So first of all, thank you for coming up with this creative idea. I think it's amazing to give these kids an opportunity to find a place for music in their schedule. And I think you're doing a valuable service probably to a lot of, a lot of students that may drop music but won't now because of this. And in a way, like, you mentioned HCC. Even the high school, I think, there are issues with fitting music into the schedule and there are students that desperately want to do music and can't. The one question I have is that before COVID, we had embarked on a project around start times and early start times. And we know from the literature that, you know, the earlier you start, the worse it is for kids. Having said that, it's much worse for high school students than for elementary students. So it may not be an issue in Wampus. And I haven't looked back at the research very recently to know kind of where those age cutoffs are. But just, that's my one question about, given that now we'll have, and it's optional, but we'll have a bunch of kids coming earlier. You know, are we doing anything negative sort of on the health front? Or at the Wampus age, is it perfectly reasonable? And it's more of an issue for our 7:00 a.m. high school health kids, which we know it's an issue there.
I can answer.
Okay, good.
Yes, it's perfectly reasonable for the Wampus kids. The only caveat is those kids also might be oversubscribed after school. So this has to be like a parent watching kids, right? That they're not oversubscribed in an after-school activity. But the sleep qualifiers were middle school.
Middle school, okay, perfect.
I think the idea of having it as an elective, to your point, like, you could choose this, but we still have it built in during the day. I think part of the strength of the encore program at Wampus, too, is when it was originally designed 20 years ago, it was to have a time in the day at Wampus for children to receive services that are not taking you out of your core academics. You know, one of the things we learned throughout these site visits, and even when we were looking at departmentalizing last year at different schools, a lot of neighboring schools pull kids out during the day like in academic, hey, you're going to go get your reading services during, you know, an academic class.
Even your enrichment.
Even your enrichment. So the strength of the encore program is that we can give all these options. But then also, the complication of the encore problem is, as you see on the board now, there's so many options, right? So just want to give you an example before, you know, if you have any more questions. Over to the left where it says Encore Classes. This is for fifth grade. So if you're a fifth-grade student right now, built-in your encore schedule is either Sustainable Arts, Technology, Library, Art, Enrichment for All, or PE. That is your encore schedule, right? You would have that five days a week. That's how we first build the schedule. Then comes, do you have any special education services? So you could be a child in, you know, Miss Holidays class that has encore technology during the month of September, but you also have resource room, reading, right? So that now means you're no longer going to technology five days a week. You're going to technology two days a week and resource room three days a week, right? So your encore starts now. If you want to take an instrument or be in an ensemble, you now have resource room three days a week. You have your instrument lesson. You have your ensemble. You don't even go to encore. So to Mark's point, sometimes when children have services or if they're in the Advanced Learner Program, you don't even go to encore. And you actually only go to band once a week because you have so many options in encore, right? So it's a wonderful thing that we don't ever pull kids from academics for these things. But what we're trying to do is allow those kids who are very musically inclined to have the opportunity to be in your lesson, your ensembles, and potentially chorus without impacting your either academic intervention services, special education services, or encore. So if you go to the next slide.
Have you done any sort of, like, a survey to parents to see if his interest?
So last year, we did one. So the current fifth-grade students, when they were fourth-grade parents, we surveyed them to see, you know, are you interested in this? And 56% of the parents initially responded, yes, I'm interested. And that kind of led us to the elective thing, too. Like, oh, that's kind of split 50/50. Let us choose. One of the kind of things that we need to look at, though, is when we do, if we move forward to this and we say, hey, what's your choice in the spring for next year? If there's an overwhelming, we have to balance it, right? So given the number we have, we'll have to then balance our ensembles before school and after school.
Lottery, the before school.
Might have the lottery.
Depends how it shakes out.
I think we'll be okay, but we may, depending on the response.
We can ask both questions. Would, you know, would you like before school? Would you like this? And then we can see which families would be happy with either, which families strongly prefer one over the other. And then we could try to go from there.
Up on the board now is just an example. On the left, the current schedule. So this would be a fifth-grade child who is in band but is not in chorus and has no services. No enrichment, no services. They go to band or orchestra on Monday. They can go to their encore class Tuesday. They go to band or orchestra on Wednesday. They have the instrument lesson Thursday. They have encore Friday, right? That would be a, that's an outlier schedule. There's a lot of kids that either are in the Advanced Learner and have some kind of a special ed, you know, whatever it may be. A lot of different pull-out services. I shouldn't say that's an outlier, but that, that child has no other services, right? No, nothing other than band. On the right, same kind of a child. What this does is if you start to take orchestra and band instead of during the day, you take it in the morning, all of that yellow is now opened up for you. That could be either just a regular encore class or your services. So you can, if you're very musically inclined, you can take your instrument, or excuse me, your ensemble in the morning, and now your whole encore. You've doubled your opportunity in encore to either be pulled out for whatever you qualify for or just go to encore. Which, I hate to say, just. Encore is great, right? It's a robust curriculum that these teachers designed. A lot of project-based learning, which leads them into the middle school. So it just opens up, you know, two more. That's a lot. 40% of your week just opened up during encore.
I'm assuming that encore is already doing this because of the nature of it, that they switch every once a month.
Day to.
Are the daily curriculums designed so that?
They can jump in and out.
If they, if they miss, if they miss today.
It's astounding, the work. I see like the art classes that Katie Constantine does. I mean, those classes, there are kids that are there one day a week or five days a week. And they are all engaged in, they're really designed so that students can interact with that curriculum, whatever is, works for them.
When you, when you come to your site visit at Wampus, we'll go into an encore so you can actually see what that looks like. I think that'll be, yeah, it's pretty. And fifth grade, one question we had from, you know, why is it only fifth grade we're considering? The fifth grade is the most pull-out opportunities because of the ensembles. Fourth grade, there are no ensembles. Third grade, there are no instrument lessons or ensembles. So fifth grade is the heavy grade that there's the most variables.
You know, just the concerns about, you know, extending the day for children and start time of so early as we know the adverse effects of the sleep and all of that. So what are the thoughts about having this age child start that early?
Yeah, that's part of the reason why we're considering it as an elective. We want to give the kids and the parents the choice because they're, you know, with the older ages, there is research. And I know we talked about that as far as before COVID. You know, so that's where we want to kind of give the option, let the parents elect into it. We'll have some flexibility. If it's not working for a child and it's October and they missed their Mac, this just isn't working, it's too early, we have the flexibility to then take the child and put them into the other orchestra or band. We try to uphold a cutoff date for that because, as you can imagine, with instrument lessons and ensembles, there's something to be said about that group of kids progressing together. But if there's an issue, we'd certainly be open to parents reaching out because we want to do what's right for the kid. We're not going to.
And teachers are happy to do the early.
I think there's a lot of interest. I mean, it's, it's an interesting thing that I think, you know, a lot of the neighboring districts do it. It would be new for us. So we've had some questions. But I think, you know, right now, there's a, you know, we are the beginning of the music program here, right? The product that is so wonderful at the high school, between the school plays and when you go there, you feel like you're like off-Broadway, right? That begins at Wampus. So we want to be able to support that and build the program as best we can.
Also, the way that our program works is the teachers from the middle school and the high school teach those lessons. So the teacher, most of the instrumental teachers are already on a shared schedule, on a secondary shared schedule. So they're already contractually in at that time.
And this is so great because we've had such an issue with drop-off. And if we could do anything to.
Yeah, and particularly if, I can understand asking a 14, 15-year-old to have to make a tricky decision like that. But when we're asking like a nine- or 10-year-old to make that call, since it's no great.
You really have to be embarrassed.
Yeah, sure.
To talk to them and make that call that works for them.
And then in the middle school, they have to go into an ensemble. So our chorus numbers are also expanding a bit, too, here. So we're hoping this could help students there.
Thank you. Great thought and work and preparation went into this. Visiting other schools and.
Thank you.
And we, this is just like additional information. I feel like we kind of discussed most of it, but.
So in the spring, when we ask folks what they want to do for fifth grade, we'll just add a question there. Hey, we're doing this. Which, which option would you prefer? There is an option for fifth-grade students that they could take the bus should they want to. But we find that most programs we've observed, the parents are dropping off. And school security is already there. So there's no change in staffing needed there.
Programs have been 7:45 and security will be there at 7:30.
Yes.
It's already there at 7:30.
They start at 7:30.
But the 7:45, because it's just fifth grade, once they get to HCC, school starts at 7:45 as well. So it's almost like a.
Correct.
So how would the bus, how would the bus work? They'll take the.
They would take the middle school bus.
Middle school bus. And they get dropped, the middle school kids off first and then, yep, move on to pop, so not walking.
Yeah, so a lot of those runs go on Wampus runs next anyway. So as they're leaving Crittena, they'll just go by Wampus, you know.
That makes sense.
It's an excellent option.
So to be, all the programs we did see, it was parent drop-off and they had 95-plus percent.
Yeah.
Attendance.
Probably is going to happen.
Yeah.
Very thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We worked on it.
Thank you guys so much. With that wonderful presentation, can I have a motion to approve item 10.1, the Wampus Zero Period Band Orchestra Program?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
Second one is the day.
Thanks for coming.
Go home now.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Just take the rest of the day off, Dave.
Take them to the box. Bye. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
All right, let's move to item 9, unfinished business. Should we do the second reads first?
Sure.
Okay. So, let's see, second reads. 45, 45261, .1 Internet Safety. 1120 School District Records. 8130 School Safety Plans and Teams. 5500 Student Records.
Any questions? If we've done these ad nauseam.
So, okay, if there's no questions since it's a second read, can I have a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
So, all in favor?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And as to first read, 4321, Programs for Students with Disabilities Under the IDEA and New York's Education Law, Article 89. 4321.1 Provision of Special Education Services in the Least Restrictive Environment. 4321.2 School-Wide Pre-Referral Approaches and Interventions. And finally, 4321.7 District-Wide and State-Wide Assessment of Students with Disabilities.
Sure, just give a brief overview?
I think to summarize, like, which ones were, like, some of them had small changes.
Yeah, a lot of them had very insignificant little changes. So the next, this meeting and the next board meeting, you'll see that a lot of our special education policies are coming back to the board to be updated with minor changes and also just because a lot of them have not been updated since 2010. And most of these policies live in law, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act as well as New York Education Law, Article 89. So the first one, 4321, Programs for Students with Disabilities Under IDEA. This is our overarching special education policy. So it's ensuring that our students with disabilities receive a free and appropriate education, that their accommodations are met, that IEPs are generated based on their needs, that our faculty and staff are brought up to speed in terms of research-based and evidence-based interventions and related services. And all the legal requirements. Always that we are educating our students with disabilities in the least restrictive environment, which is really important. That they're learning alongside their non-disabled peers and that they're also socialized in terms of co-curricular and extracurricular activities alongside their non-disabled peers as well. That's just in a nutshell. 4321.1, the provision of special education services, again, in the least restrictive environment. Here again, like I just mentioned, ensuring that they are a part of our mainstream environment as much as possible academically, learning alongside their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent appropriate. And that we are tailoring our general education curriculum to meet their needs while also providing accommodations. And again, of course, access to all our extracurriculars and co-curricular. 4321.2 School-Wide Pre-Referral Approaches and Interventions. Again, this is our responsibility. I know you've heard Tim talk a lot about MTSS, which is our multi-tiered systems of support. This is, this policy ensures that we are providing interventions prior to a special ed referral. So we're using research-based interventions, whether it's focused on academic, behavioral, emotional, and that we are giving our students an opportunity to benefit from an intervention and keep a special education referral at bay. And if not, then we will, of course, move to a special education referral. And then lastly, 4321.7 District-Wide and State-Wide Assessments of Students with Disabilities. Here again outlines our requirement to ensure that our students with disabilities are participating in all of our district-wide and statewide assessments. Of course, provided that if they have an IEP and they have testing accommodations outlined specific to their needs, that those accommodations are implemented during that testing to ensure that they can show their knowledge and skills. Also, that we provide alternate assessments for our students who are cognitively impaired to the point where even with accommodations, they would not be able to demonstrate their knowledge and skills due to their cognition. And then also that our administrators are looking at every opportunity in terms of universal design to ensure equal access for our students with disabilities. Any more questions?
My question for Gina. Thank you, Gina.
Thank you, Gina.
Thanks, Gina.
We have a motion to approve the first read of the policies that Gina just discussed.
So moved.
All in favor? Thank you, Gina.
Yeah.
I think we have to go back to 10, to 10.
Point two.
Point where is it up here? 10.2 Site-Based.
9.2.
9.2?
Oh, calendar.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry, thank you.
Forgot about that.
Great, 9.2. Any questions about the calendar?
Nope.
All right. If there's no questions, could I have a motion to adopt the 2025-2026 District Calendar? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
We did receive one or two questions from parents about why all the holidays don't appear on the one-page calendar. And we told them that the holidays appear. They, yeah, they'd be the wrong page. They appear on the school calendar when it comes out. They appear on the school calendar when it comes out, but this is just to say days that schools are off.
Right.
And every parent we spoke to said, oh, that makes a lot of sense, but just in case.
Oh, holidays where school's still in session.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Where the district-wide calendar will outline every holiday regardless whether we're in school or not, but we just, we, we had great conversations with those parents and we just didn't want them to think that we excluded anything, but it just wasn't a day off based on this calendar, so.
Thank you, okay, uh.
There was, uh, a, a question came up, I just realized, uh, but I don't know if it's appropriate to say, just regarding, um, when there is a snow day or delay, if the link could be put to the schedule when the, the announce, when the alert comes out for like, I don't know if that's possible because I know it's four different schools.
You mean at the high school?
Every, every school, it, it's being scheduled.
Yeah, I think so.
So you have to, you go in and you can find it, but there's always.
Because I'm setting the delay up at five AM.
Right.
They're not, they don't even know, the principals don't even know at the time that I'm informing parents.
Right, so but like if that, uh, but the, the main system that, that sends everything out, if the, if the, this delay schedule could be attached to it.
So they're gonna change every day, so, so from five o'clock in the morning until the delay gets in, that's when the building leaders are figuring out what does the schedule have to be now?
It's not that, but it's, you'd still have to come at the same time though, it's like what time will you have to do, like what time would first period be or?
Oh, I see what you're saying, just the start time.
Start time.
Start time.
Oh, I thought you meant the whole schedule.
That's because they said that they have to go in and find it.
But it's not exactly three hours.
Which you can.
Yes, like the class is.
So I don't know if that can work though, I don't know if that can work, it's something to think about.
Like the high school starts at like, whatever, like ten to ten, it's like nine fifty, it's not ten o'clock.
If you have a delay, if you have a.
It's, like, it's not quite three hours.
You know what I'm saying, it's a start time.
It's not just two hours.
Is this just because of office hours or is it?
No, everything's different.
It's whenever the period starts.
It's like an odd, it's, it changes, like, and then sometimes the, um, at the high school, but I don't know about the other schools, but every, they, it was, it wasn't only high school, it was younger grades too.
We'll look into that.
We're all like. I just wake my kids up two or three hours later depending on the delay and assume.
It's not exact science. A couple of parents asked for that.
So you're, so you're early, you're saying, you're not late, if it's too, you're, you're early to school as opposed to, right?
They just want to know what time school, what's the day would start, it's not exactly two hours, it's like, right, it's like, it's like, yeah.
So in other words, if Jen calls it or she puts it, if we put it in as a two-hour delay, it would be like Byron Hills High School starts at this time, H E C starts at this time.
Correct, but I don't know if that's, um, doable because it's a lot of schools, it's, so, and like, and, and is every parent, is doesn't have a.
Well, the only reason we would do that is if they weren't all exactly three hours.
Right, that's what, yeah.
Right, so we'll look into that.
Sorry, it was just came up.
No, don't be sorry.
It just triggered my memory of it, okay, thank you.
Ten point two, site-based team mid-year report.
Sure, so for the last three years, we were focused, the site-based team was focused on, um, our character and principles. I shared those with you last year and I encourage our viewing audience to go to our webpage and look at our character education principles, they're really terrific. And this year, we're spending our time thinking about how we implement those, uh, character education principles in classrooms. What does it look like in our schools as we're developing students' character? A lot of things already exist, so we're building on what exists there and things we need to create. Um, in your packet, you have the building levels, site-based teams are meeting as well and they set up goals every year. Um, both Coman Hill and Wampus have been focused on the Character Strong Program, the Character Education Program and implementing that. We're in our fourth year at Wampus and our second year at Coman Hill. Um, H C C is focused on digital wellness and we'll be hearing more about some activities and ways to involve students in that conversation with parents around digital wellness. At the high school, Chris Walsh has been focused on preparing for the transition to the Portrait of a Graduate and the new graduation measures with his site-based team. So the mid-year report, you can read through the table here, I'll report again at the end of the year.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Your staff reports, uh, superintendent.
All right, we have some great student highlights today. So Ella Saltstein, uh, received the Neuroscience Prize Award, congratulations to Ella. Um, this is given in partnership with Child Neurology Association and she received a thousand dollar honorarium and has an opportunity to present her research during a poster session at the two thousand twenty-five Child Neurology Society Annual Meeting in October. Wow. Right?
Amazing.
Um, we have another ASR student who is representing Byron Hills at J S H S, so, oh, we did. Congratulations to the five students who presented their work. Um, and also, um, Sebastian, who's pictured here, advanced to the National Junior Science and Humanities Symposium in Virginia in April for his computer science research, pretty outstanding. We had five seniors, um, attend, it was Sebastian, Andrew Levy, Cooper Lipton, Addison Rappaport and Lindy, uh, Lindsey Cody. Congratulations to our students, pretty amazing. Junior, uh, Max Charney, Max Charney is, his name is everywhere. Like, if you didn't know who this kid was, you're gonna know by the end of today. So he wins the Congressional App Challenge, uh, for this district. He was named the winner by Mike Lawler's District Seventeen with his app News Compass. He submitted the app in October and as a result, News Compass will be showcased in the U.S. Capitol later this year. He was invited to the winner's celebration in Washington DC and Lawler will formally announce the district winner at a special event on Valentine's Day. Pretty cool. Nine students Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards, this is, this is like the, um, the high school Pulitzer. Well, no, it's not the Pulitzer, I think it's the Nobel, Nobel Award. Pulitzer, uh, has, has its own issues, you have to apply yourself. Scholastic Art Award, uh, we had Sarah Barshad, Matt Geller, who had honorable mention, um, Angelina Nie, Gold Key, um, and also honorable mention, and Alexa Schuster for honorable mention, uh, for printmaking, painting, photography, all fantastic. We also had Max Charney.
Hello.
See, I told you. Um, hu- his, um, humor for a letter to future archaeologists who will inevitably misinterpret everything about our civilization, I love it. Uh, Justin Ispon, honorable mention for poetry, Do Dreams Reach Where Rubble Rains? And Quinn Prus, uh, honorable mention for a personal essay and memoir, from that number four. Pretty awesome. Gold Key Works are automatically advanced national level in New York City and they will be announced March twenty-sixth. I love that our kids are so involved in all these different things. Um, a, a nice, uh, congratulations to Peter Lipton and the work he does with the Vex Robotics Win. Uh, they won big, um, our students, um, Stefan, sorry, Sarkisov and Max Moy, eighth out of thirty teams, a thrilling playoff match before being eliminated in the semifinals. Um, and we had Sutton and Noah made history by earning the team's first trophy, the judges' awards, and the honors given to the team that demonstrates special attributes, effort, teamwork, professionalism, student-centered ethos. Congratulations to the whole team for their hard work and success, that's a lot of fun. Global Scholars Students Visit Coman Hill. Tim and I were also virtually with Global Scholars Students all day on Sunday, uh, for their global pitch event. But here, we had ninety students from the high school go to the kids at the elementary school at Coman Hill and share a lesson and read a book on food insecurity. Um, they ask young learners about themes and ways they can help people in need and this really subscribes to the Coman Hill cereal challenge that they did. Um, where the whole school went outside, they collected cereal for children in need and they did that, um, whole school-wide activity, really great. Thank you to our students, I love the fact that our high school students are reaching out to younger kids, they're serving as leaders to them, um, thanks to the people who are doing the program. Lisa Squadron, Kim Goitz, Jen Layden are just doing an outstanding program. Uh, we had fun, Gina and I went on Friday night, they had two shows on Saturday, which were rearranged due to snow, uh, but we got them in, high-energy musical to life, uh, the singing, the dancing, the costumes, the kids, this is what I loved, you could look at any given time and any student on stage was like the star, right? You know when you, you have a cast like that where it doesn't matter what role you're playing, if I looked only at you, I would think that you were the actual star of that play, like they were in it to win it.
I was so good.
It was so good.
It was terrific.
Yeah.
I was so impressed with how good of a job they did.
I loved on the, um, Friday night too, a bunch of high school kids came, which was really nice and they, you know, the kids, the younger kids really loved that, they inspired them.
Very supportive of each other, it's very nice, nice community.
Um, it was really great, so please, uh.
The heart of the city, where dreams are born and hope is ignited, a revolution is brewing. We are the Newsies, the voice of the streets, we were trying to sell our papers, but now we're tired of getting pushed around. Join us as we rise up against the greedy giants of the publishing world. Wages and respect. This is our story, our struggle and our victory. Come and join us on February seventh and eighth for Newsies Junior, where the spirit of the street comes alive. Get your tickets now and be part of the revolution.
Crazy great Brian Melso, who happens to be in the back of the room right now, gives these kids opportunities for these promos, I mean, can you imagine being in middle school and these promos are being shared out to the.
So, so, so cool.
Thank you, Brian.
And the, the Riley players have some good up-and-coming talent.
Oh, they really do, they really do.
They were really terrific.
All right, Byron Hills Track and Field shatters records, brings home championships, Tyler, Nate, Zach, Derek, who were not only section one athletics league championship in the four-by-two-hundred, but set a new school record with an incredible time of, I would not even know what that meant, one minute thirty-four fifty. The following weekend at Westchester tracked championships at the Armory, Tyler became the three-hundred-meter county champion. And not stopping there, he and his four-by-two-hundred relay teammates, Nate, Zach and Derek, broke their own school record yet again, clocking in at a great score to become Westchester County Champions. And the sixteen-hundred school record was also broken with a new time by Zach, Derek, Derek and Tyler, fantastic. I know, breaking your own record that broke the record, that's, that's a, that's a good broken record. Uh, Nick Fortuno, I, I loved seeing the Westchester, um, when they were going to the championships, seeing our high school kids lining the hallways so that our kids who were on this wrestling merge team could be sent off with success, it was really great, and Nick Fortuno.
It was a big group of kids, it was, it was used for a while, it was just Nick, right?
Yeah, we have a big group.
Yeah.
And, uh, Nick secured his third Westchester County Championship title. Um, he's just beyond compare. Um, ah, this is my favorite.
I heard this was the shot of the century.
It's the shot of the century and the next school day, I went and bought Valentines and brought them to these two basketball players because I've never seen anything like this, like anything, wait until you see. So we had Zachaphobe and Chris ignite the Byron Hills win over Ry on January thirty-first. Uh, they delivered a show-stopping moment in basketball victory over Ry, I mean, I, I, if, what you could see is Chris throws it up on the backboard and then I just want you to watch Zach.
It, they're professional, they're.
Wait, I wanna watch it one more time. Oh, wait.
Want me to make, here, I'll make a.
Yeah, you do it.
I must have watched it six times, oh, yeah.
So great, so great, I love it. So congratulations to our incredible students. Thank you, Paint The Rink, although I was not there, varsity hockey team raised twelve thousand dollars to support breast cancer awareness. Ron Stagna said it, he said, it is the greatest community event that I think I might have ever been at. The number of kids that were there, the way the kids were supporting their cause, he said that, he, he said it's moving. It's actually just moving to be there and watch our kids, that's incredible, that's a lot. And go Bobcats, that's it for the super.
Thank you. On to you, Tim.
Okay, um, just two updates, one is on our international travel. So this summer, Melissa Stahl will be organizing our first international trip. Just to remind you of the purpose, the international travel is to provide students an opportunity to develop skills and make connections of classroom in real life through some excursion. They build skills and perspective-taking, collaboration and communication. Um, it's personal development through self-awareness, developing their agency, um, and applying their learning in authentic situations. So this summer, um, we have six students who will be going on a trip to the Netherlands, Belgium, Germany, and then we're announcing the trip for twenty-twenty-six, so that trip will be a Japan trip. You heard Melissa Stahl and Jen Sporelli talk about there, we, they went on the trip this past summer to experience, experience that trip and prepare for what it would be like for students. They presented on just the, um, uh, just how incredible that experience is and what it would be like for students to go on that trip. So that will be in twenty-twenty-six, uh, Ms. Stahl will announce this in the spring, so she'll send information out to the parent community, uh, for those parents who want to begin planning it, and then she'll hold an in-person information session in September. So she'll make sure she gets communication out about that, but that'll be a twenty-twenty-six trip to Japan. Looking forward to that. And the second announcement is, uh, you have at your desk the, this year's special recognition document.
Fantastic.
My assistant Colin O'Connor for putting this together. Um, the purpose of this is to show the value added to our educational, what makes Byron Hills, um, above and beyond a really great place for our students. And this highlights a lot of those things that don't get highlighted in, say, what the state emphasizes in reports. We do show some of our state testing, uh, data, which is phenomenal, but also other achievements like student publications. Many of our students get published, um, into other journals or, uh, chapters and books. Um, we highlight our athletic program and our arts program and some of those amazing accomplishments. So you can see this document and we'll make sure we distribute this to our families, um, it's on our website, but also during budget season, when Janet Kelly go around, they will share this document with our families so they can see what they're, uh, what they are contributing to by supporting our schools. So thanks for all the support everyone gives and, um, we keep trying to make it a little bit better and highlighting, uh, the data in ways that really show, um, the value added to Byron Hills. So thank you for all your support.
Thanks, Tim.
Hey, Tim. Uh, any board reports?
Uh, there was a B H F meeting that we just went through last week, um, and P C S A is today. The other thing that's happening is just the legislative season is underway and so we're going to a series of meetings, me and I are splitting it to various legislators and there was one last week and, I mean, I think my main messages have been around sort of long-term financial issues, so Foundation Aid seems relatively clear for this year about what's gonna happen in the future. Being able to be, have more flexibility around reserves, which actually seems to be getting some reception around specifically an O P E V reserve, so be very specific about the ask, and then cell phones and what is likely to be a governor's ban, um, what does that look like? How is it gonna, you know, impede our local flexibility to do what is right for our district, our parents and our kids? Those are the main themes, you know, I've been bringing up.
What else? Any communications to the board? Seeing none, um.
Well, we had one communication that came today. Um, our Canvas Literary Magazine from our high school and thank you to our editor-in-chief, Ashley Stangle, our senior editor, Casey Goldstein, um, our editor, Leila Biles, all for an amazing writers and artists that are included in here and their advisor, Francine Aber, really beautiful.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, with that, can I please have a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes from the January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting?
Doctor?
All in favor? Okay, great, and can I have a motion to adjourn today's meeting?
So must.
And thank you, oh, sorry, all in favor?
All in favor?
And thank you to the board for coming at O-Dark hour this morning so that we could have this board meeting and, um, as we prepare for a bit of snow tonight, hopefully no delays tomorrow, but I will let you know if I'm watching the weather.
We are watching the weather.